We're going to get started, guys. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming. This is the Town of Eastchester Planning Board Meeting of March 27, 2025. If all would rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, let's get started. Let's just do the roll call. Michael Fortuna.
Present.
Joseph Rubino.
Present.
Jim Bonano is here. Lauren Goodrich.
Present.
Phil Nemisak.
Present.
Let's see. I think we could approve some minutes, so let's just get that housekeeping out of the way. We have all your comments, Mr. Nemisak?
I've circulated, I think on February 27th, I circulated my comments on the January 23rd, 2027 meeting, and last night I circulated my comments on the February 27, 2025 meeting.
Thank you. So then I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 23rd Planning Board Meeting, subject to Mr. Nemisak's comments. We all can say yea or nay, except for Lauren and I don't think you're present, so I make a motion to approve them.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Similarly, I make a motion to approve the minutes of February 27, 2025, subject to Mr. Nemisak's comments. I think except for you two guys, so it's the three of us. So...
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Let's see. So the applications we're going to hear tonight, just quickly, the ones on the agenda are previous applications are Locust Avenue, 32 Harney Road, Maple Avenue Subdivision, 34 Water Street, and 1 and 3 Wrigley on our Way, the Marble Dale Road Subdivision, 122 Montgomery Avenue, 86 Woodruff Avenue, and 69 Highland Avenue. The one that's adjourned is application 2302, 203 Beach Street, and the 104 and 108 Highland Avenue Subdivision. They'll be on the April 24th agenda. So let's get started. We have a lot of applications, so let's go at it. The first application is Locust Avenue.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Benedict Salanietro. I'm a civil engineer. On behalf of Locust Development, John, our architect, is absent this evening, so I did watch the last meeting of the Planning Board. It was an interesting meeting, and I'm here tonight to quickly go over what we've done since that last meeting in consultation with the town's consulting engineer, if that's So at the last meeting, there was conversation at the end, which was the most important reason why we're back here, a conversation about soil conditions or elevation of the groundwater. Subsequent to last week, the last month's meeting, and in respect to the memo that we received, we did perform field testing on the property. So we did a large excavation in the rear, we did an excavation in the front, we determined the elevation of where the water table was static, and we also did some additional investigation. There is a, I call it a well because it looks like a well and it acts like a well, on the property, not a dry well, a well. We measured, it's about nine feet deep. Water was about three feet below the top. We were able to get a hose from our neighbor to the left, fill this guy up. At some point, about an hour and a half later, it kind of went to steady state, about three feet below grade. So what I've done, in recognition of the water table being shallow in the rear, is utilize the higher depth of groundwater in the front. So preliminarily, the concept is to bring the drainage from the house to dry wells in the front as a detention system. We're also proposing to, in order to do that effectively, level the grade in the front, this small portion here, this black line is basically a proposed retaining wall to hold about two and a half to three feet of soil, so that this area is level. We can install these wells here. There are comments still outstanding. I didn't have, I didn't meet the deadline for fully revised plans, but at this juncture, I wanted to hopefully satisfy the board with any inquiry regarding the neighbor's claim that there's something going around here, there's nothing there, we dug this trench here, his house is around here. So that's why I did, I took the liberty of using Washington County GIS mapping to get a perspective. This is a larger view of the neighborhood. This is basically the two parcels, 30-32, and the well is back here. So we dug this area here, and there's no drains coming from his property here. This, you know, this depicts the town sanitary sewer line. We did find the pipe back here, not from 24 Locust, rather emanating from, we believe, 34. Has nothing to do with anything that concerns our development. It's there. I think the commentary that your consultant noted on yesterday's memo is that investigations of some sort should be done to determine what exactly is going on with that pipe. I think there, I think this is an old subdivision, if you will, where, you know, as you dig, you find things. So there's nothing here to suggest that their water from, their collected water is going on to this property. There's nothing on the county land records to indicate an encumbrance of a deed of sorts, so we're satisfied that 24 Locust water is not entering this property or any dry wells. There's no dry wells on this property that serve any of the neighbors. So with the project change in terms of bringing the drainages up front, as I showed, the house, basically this backyard is not going to be impacted with any of our new drainage. We will endeavor to investigate further, work with the town, but at this juncture, I don't see the Planning Board needing to deal with that level of granular information because it doesn't impact the development. It might be, I envision through conversation, that there's going to have to be a private easement amongst neighbors to get water to move across, but it has nothing to do with our development. We're not interrupting anything that's in place. So we would like the board's consideration, I think you were almost there last month and got sidetracked, for consideration of approval with conditions. I think Mr. Bolander indicated that a lot of these are typical site plan or site development notations that we would definitely work out, subject to the board's approval, then nothing that changes anything. You know, they're, I just didn't get a chance to change all my plans and meet the deadline.
Right, and so we have a memo, and you're probably the same one right now, from Mr. Bolander, dated March 26th, that has 24 items, so...
Got it.
Would you come up and just tell us if you feel the significance of this? Thank you.
Good evening. Rick Bolander, K-CJ Consulting. I had a brief conversation with regards to the pipe that was uncovered in the backyard. Had a brief conversation with the highway superintendent this afternoon, and actually just spoke with him on my cellphone. Just wanted to confirm with him that most likely, and we're still investigating, but most likely it's a sanitary sewer service from the adjacent property. I had thought in our original conversation that it was a town line. The highway superintendent just confirmed that it's not a town line. Most likely it's coming from the neighbor's property, it's the sanitary sewer service. And then in regards, which we'll obviously investigate further and finalize. And with regards to the civil engineering plans, yes, the stormwater system was shifted from the back to the front, and there's, it's a good base, a good foundation, but we just want to see those plans just a little further along engineering-wise, just to ensure that we can mitigate the 100-year storm. But there is, you know, there's room and there's opportunity to do that, we just need to see that. Other than that, engineering-wise, it's really geared towards stormwater, and like I said, there's a solution there, we just need to see those plans just further advanced.
So as I said, it's a big, long memo, it's four pages long, there's 24 different issues. Are you telling me that you think they all can be picked up unconditionally, or should we get the drawings revised, brought back?
I think we should get the drawings revised. I think our office would be more comfortable with revised drawings, so we could really dive in.
Okay. I agree. I would like the same thing. Yeah, just, it's too many things. I don't want to go in point by point. I'd rather everything be clean, we look at it, you say it's good, we give you a thumbs up, we all go home.
And I'm sure Mr. Salanietro has those solutions. Like he said, he just didn't have the time to advance the plans ahead of the submission deadline, but it's there.
Great. That was the main question. As far as that pipe, it just has to be explored.
Yep. And I'll work with the highway super and we'll...
As the applicant said, it has really no bearing on his, on his...
Yep.
On his application. Okay, I got it. Guys, any other questions? So this is an open public hearing, so if there's any comments from the public, now is the time. Thank you. Going once, going twice.
If I, just to clarify in my own mind, that even though this is two parcels, the application is to build a single, a single-family residence on it.
Correct. It's a lot merger by operation of law. I think you guys talked about it last month.
We did, yes. I just want to, because looking at the relative sizes of the homes, I don't think you could fit two on there.
And I think it was commented that the assessor would do that as a simple measure of an apportionment, rather than filing with the county land records.
Yep, okay. Just wanted to clarify.
And to the extent, whenever we get to a resolution, if it's a rev, a resolution of approval, we will have as a condition of the building permit that the applicant submit the letter requesting the merger to the assessor.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, the commentary, the comments on the consultant's memo are identical from last month. We were pretty close last month for the board's consideration of allowing the approval with a condition. I recognize what I just heard, and it, which is, which is fine, we can do that. The only problem we have is that meeting certain deadlines in order for you guys to see the same, see the plans, you know. Sometimes with conditional approval, there's a little bit more back and forth flexibility for engineer to work with engineer to get the answers that you're looking for. But there are no new comments on this memo from the last memo of the 27th of February, except for what we uncovered from the field testing, which was a sanitary pipe in the furthest part of the property in the rear. But nothing has changed in terms of engineering comments or surprises.
I still think it would require us to understand each and every comment, see their significance, so we sort of defer to our consultant.
I'm just pushing on behalf of the client.
Yep, understood.
I understand in every respect with your positions.
No, thank you. All right, so come back next, right, come back to the next meeting, everything's cleaned up, it'll be quick and easy. Thank you. And the public hearing stays open. Thank you. The next application is, next application is 2513 Great Day Family Childcare, 32 Harney Road. Is that yours?
Yeah.
He's going to zoom in.
Yeah, he'll zoom in, I think we're good.
Hey Gary, where'd you go? We'll pick that up after, after you speak.
I got it, I picked it up.
No, I mean, we'll pick that up on the screen after you're done. You're on the screen right now.
All right, awesome. Well, hello, good evening, board. Robert Thomas here for Great Day Family Childcare, representing our application for a special use permit to operate daycare facility at 32 Harney Road. The proposed project is a small operation, small daycare. We expect it to be capped at about 15 children. That's based on a number of items, primarily the size of the space, the amount of space that we will allot for the operation of the daycare, but mostly on the permitted ratios between child and adult, regulated by New York State, for the particular age ranges, which primarily toddler. We were here last month and represented our application. There was great concern, we believe rightfully so, over drop-off and pickups on the Harney Road entrance for the property. We've reviewed that, and we definitely agree with the board and the community that the Harney Road location entrance is not suitable for drop-offs and pickups. We revise our application to kind of state that that will, we will prohibit that location for use of that for the drop-off and pickup activity of the families, and any policies and communications going forward, if, you know, permitted to operate with our families, will essentially state that. That leaves us with the Downer Ave entrance, which on our site plan, our architect isn't here today, John, does show we have two spots. We believe that's three spots. We've measured them ourselves to be 28 feet, which would, you know, three spots, but we're really not here to, or I guess plan to debate that one today. We'll have our architect further review and provide revised plans if, you know, if that turns out to be true. We mostly want to address the safety concerns of Downer Avenue, and whether or not that could be used or facilitate safe drop-offs and pickups. To help us get a view of that, of whether or not we can do that, we leveraged some data that's available from the DOT, Department of Transportation, over the last number of years. They provided utilization or throughput on, you know, north, sorry, east-west, going up and down Downer. So on the board, it's on the application. But really quickly, during those peak hours of drop-offs, between seven and nine, we have varying ranges, but going back a number of years, so we have 80 cars volume for during the drop-off hours, seven to nine, 84 vehicles during pickup, five and six thirty. Now, that does go back to 2019, which is a bit dated, so we do have, that is our largest sample size, 2019, but we do have samples going back to 2023. Does show an increase of 104 vehicles during the drop-off hours of seven and nine, and, well, I'm sorry, that's averages across the days of the week. And then, again, an average of 98 vehicles during the pickup hours.
Is this data illustrated in that chart?
This is illustrated on the chart. I do have smaller, I guess, copies.
In case the, Gary wanted to zoom in on that, that data, if you're quoting from it.
Yes. Uh-huh. So yes, that does go back to 2023, which I guess could be a bit dated, so we did a little observations of our own, using video cameras during those peak, again, the drop-offs and the pickups during those windows. Now, we did get higher, we did get higher numbers. It is towards the bottom of the screen, it's highlighted, of an average between seven and nine, 140 vehicles, that's east and west on Downer Ave, and for pickups, 113 vehicles. Now, we do have an explanation for the reason why there is such an increase between the prior years. DOT placed their sensor or station further up Downer Avenue, but where we did our observation, that was more in the corner, where we captured traffic going up Downer and continuing down Scarsdale. So we do believe that that is the most accurate representation of the, you know, traffic that we do see today. This data was recorded and filmed earlier this month, first week of March. So the question is, does this facilitate, or can this, you know, access on Downer Ave facilitate safe drop-offs and pickups? And we believe that it does, considering a few things, the small size of the project, capped at 15 children, and with that, considering a couple of things, that we would be operating at capacity, that may not always be the case, accounting for absences that readily occur, and also there usually is some grouping of children or pairs of kids, so siblings and whatnot, so that typically would reduce the number of cars coming on and off of the property during, well, utilizing those spots during drop-offs and pickups. Another thing that we've considered, and we think is important, is I believe the board is aware that we have ran some advertisements for a location. Unfortunately, I think it might have upset a few, but no malintent there. But 40% of the people who responded to those ad, who took actions on those ads, reached out to us, asked, hey, when is it opening, is there availability? Of course, we never, you know, said we were open or anything like that, but 40% of those people lived within the Green Knolls community. We didn't include it to the application, but we, I guess primarily for privacy, but we do have that data to share if the board asks. So we do anticipate that a large percentage of the families that we would service at this location would be, you know, geared towards the Green Knolls community, which the property is located. So potentially, we believe that that traffic might largely already be included in what is captured here earlier this month, you know, the going and comings to and from the train and whatnot. Yep, we've spoken to, oh, well, that also goes to us, we believe some support in the community for daycare facility at this location. We've spoken to a few just by chance, who kind of revealed to us that there is some sort of a petition going on against it, and they voiced that they felt pressured to sign and such, I mean, that's hearsay, but, but after getting to know a lot of the younger families in the community, we got to know, one, that there is a need, and we feel like some may have been misled to understand that this project or proposal is more commercial than it is, larger than it is, when it really is just a small, family-run daycare. It will be ran by the residents, my wife, my sister, and my mom over here. And, yeah, that's mostly it. There has been some interest in some, some items on the property, a shed, some railing, some fencing. Just want to say that, you know, according to 12H Section J, we will be abiding to the local, state, and all the regulatory bodies that will have to visit and do inspections on the property. So anything safety-wise, we will go above and beyond, safety is our first priority. So anything that is highlighted by any of the bodies that come, there will be multiple onsite visits to the property to point out, you know, anything that might need to be adjusted or corrected, and we'll take those very seriously and make those corrections.
Can you explain to me how a drop-off would occur on Downer? Because Downer, is Downer a two-way street?
Downer's a two-way street, yes.
Okay. But the side of Downer that the location is on is on the left side as you're coming off of Harney. So that would not be, you know, you couldn't just pull in right next to the curb on that side, you'd have to be on the opposite side of the street, or you'd have to come around, right?
If you're coming...
Well, do you, sorry to interrupt you, but do you want to put up this plan so that you can maybe show?
All right, so if you're traveling eastbound on Downer, so, you know, crossing Harney Road, left turn into the property, utilizing these spots, and then, of course, if you're coming westbound, you're coming down Downer, right turn into the property.
So you'd be making left turn if you're coming off of Harney, from either direction? You'd go onto Downer and make a left turn into one of those two spots? Is that what you're?
If you're coming down, if you're coming down Harney this way, left turn. If you're coming down, westbound on Downer, right turn into the spots. If you're coming eastbound on Scarsdale Avenue, left turn, not on Harney, but in the Downer intersection, so it's much less utilized there. Only left turn would be if you're coming down Harney Road, and then left turn into your property.
Oh, but if you're, if you're going up Harney Road from the Bronx River Parkway, you're making a right turn onto Downer, and then making a left into one of the two spots, right?
If you're coming up Harney Road, there is a dedicated right turn sectional, it's a section off, right turn, and then, yes, left into Harney. So you're not actually, so, yeah, you're making a left in.
So I guess unless you're coming down Downer, you'll be making a left turn across Downer, it's again to the spot, right? If you're coming down Downer, you make a right turn into where the parking is, in any other case, you have to make a left across Downey to get into the spots.
Yes, I believe so.
Got it.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. So the people dropping off would have to make that left or right turn into one of those three dedicated spots, and then when they finish with the drop-off, would have to back up onto Downey Road?
Downer.
Downey Road, to come back onto Harney or in the opposite direction, so they would have to back out from those spots?
That's correct, yeah, they would have to back out of those spots, yeah. Which is what we like to think is a less utilized road and facility.
Yeah, we haven't even gotten there yet, but that's the direction we're going in. Thank you. Yeah, that's probably, and so just, I guess, we can come back to the traffic circulation because that's probably the bigger issue. What about parking spaces? How many, what's required by code and residents and daycare and employees?
Right. So what our code requires is for the residents, two spaces. For the daycare center drop-off pickup, one space per 500 square feet or major portion thereof, so it would be four, because it's about 1,800 square feet, right? And then one per employee.
One per employee.
Yes, so the residents are the employees. The resident parking, we're going to say, is going to be on, on the Harney Road. We are, if this is three spots, we would be 25% deficient in that area. We are 40% underneath the maximum of the permit, which is 25.
Yeah, could you speak a little more clearly and louder?
Yes, so, yes, absolutely, I'll say it again. The residents are the employees. The two spots, we're going to say, the residents are going to utilize the Harney Road entrance, just strictly for the residents slash employees. On Downer, we are, if it is the three spots, we are 25% deficient in that, in the parking requirement for that. We are 40% below the maximum of the permit use, which is 25.
So do they have to be regulation spots? Because right now, they're, what are they, it's 24 feet across?
Our plans say 22 feet, we believe it's 28 feet. I believe that miscalculation came from measurements off the survey, which had been scanned and resized, fit on paper, but our architect is reviewing that. We did measure 28 feet ourselves.
But what's a parking store by code?
Nine by 18, yeah. Nine by 18.
Nine.
Yeah.
It's nine, so, right, the plan, right, like you said, the plan is showing 24 right now, so that's not three speeds, three spots, it's two. You're saying it may be more, but the plan isn't showing that.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to stick with what's on the plan, which is two.
Yes.
From a code compliance perspective, they would have to provide the parking for the residents and for the employees and for the drop-off pickup spaces. As a practical matter, evaluating the sufficiency of parking and an argument in favor of the variance might be that the residents, that the employees reside on the premises, but a variance would be needed for those employee spaces, even though the, our code just doesn't provide for... doesn't provide for resident, for resident employees in that way in our parking.
Yes, understood.
Right, so it's two plus two plus four.
That would be the extent of the variance, whether resident employees is a mitigating factor or something for the boards to consider, but from a code compliance perspective, the residents are separate from the employees.
Sure. So it's deficient on parking, as you just said, whether it's twenty-eight percent or more it is deficient. So, I mean, that being said, I think that's a big issue. I think the circulation and the cars getting in and out is of a great concern to everyone, at least to myself. Like, I'm not quite sure how you would get into out of those spots, because I think your numbers showed like a car a minute. If I, I just glanced in pretty quickly, it was like one forty for a two-hour period, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Which is a car a minute. That's a lot of volume during the peak time. It was the morning time, I think is what you put up.
Seven and nine.
If you can imagine yourself trying to back out of a spot in heavy traffic with cars coming by, one car per minute, and having multiple cars lining up, it's a great concern, and I'm not quite sure it can be addressed at all. I mean, we've seen, we've all been down this road, literally, yes. We've all been down this road, and we know how heavy the traffic is in that intersection, and I certainly think that, I think there's something on a special permit that says that once it's granted, it can make the conditions no worse than they were before the...
Correct.
Before the permit was granted.
Right, they have to, the impact has to be analogous to permitted uses, correct?
Yeah, so, right, the condition without the permit is a far less severe condition than will occur when this is here. So that in and of itself, I'm not quite sure if we can grant a special permit for that. In addition to the fact that, you know, we're here to screen what we think works and what doesn't, and right now, I'm not convinced you can get in and out of that. And holding up traffic would be a real problem, and having people try and direct traffic is an even bigger problem, so I'm not sure, I'm not sure it really works. That's my, that's my two cents.
Yeah, besides the fact that the use is not, it's not a typical use for this residential area, which is why you have to meet these additional burdens. It's not that you can't, you know, the reason you're before us is you're requesting our approval of this particular application. And I do know that there's been, there've been a number of, there's certainly some opposition from the local neighborhood, and I understand, I mean, there's some benefit to your being on the fringe of the neighborhood, but it also is a very busy area right in that corner. So these are all things that we're considering at the moment. It's a difficult spot. It is a difficult spot.
I mean, the data you brought was a little bit helpful, but I don't know how much it helped your case, actually. So that's, I mean, the comments.
Yeah, I guess the question would be if it was at capacity, do the, I don't know the rules with daycare service about the kids having time outdoors and it being located on a busy corner. Would that require fencing to go up around the property? Would they be in the backyard? Would they be on the deck area? Or, you know, because I'm sure they need time outdoors, I would assume. Maybe is that, is that a?
No, that's absolutely correct. Yeah, so we have a side yard. There is a deck area. Children would go out and play in groups, small groups. We'd rotate through outdoor time. Wouldn't be all outdoor at once, so probably groups of, you know, six, seven, you know, what that might be.
Do you have that special permit text?
Sure, it is.
You can send it to me? I have it too. Oh, it's at the back of that? Okay, I got that. I'm just going to read it while you guys keep talking.
No, ma'am, just go up to the mic and you have to identify yourself for the record.
Mm-hmm. Did we go to the public hearing?
I think she's the representative of the applicant.
She's one of the applicants, I guess.
My name is Cynthia Joseph, and I've been licensed with the New York State since two thousand and five. And my location is in New Rochelle. And they're talking about traffic. I live by New Rochelle High School. It's five thousand kids goes to that school, okay? And one day, the parents that I have, I'm licensed for sixteen right now, and now one day, the parents complain and say, oh, there's too much traffic. But I got the place over there in thirty-two Harney Road, okay? It used to be a doctor's office. And they keep on saying it's traffic. The people that live in this town called the state on me, the New York State, and said that I'm running illegal daycare over thirty-two Harney Road. And I wasn't, I don't have no business going there. And I was investigated with thirty-two Harney Road for sixty days, knowing, they know I don't have any business over there. And I sat here and listened to the way they speak, okay? If you guys don't want me in Harney Road, just say I don't want you in Harney Road.
Ma'am, ma'am, you have to address us, please.
No, it's the truth, it's the truth.
Look, we're considering, we're considering an application and we...
It's the truth, because they know what, and then after they called the state, they called the board, and I was investigated with the board again. It's, that's not right. They know I don't have a daycare running at thirty-two Harney Road, and they're not supposed to call the New York State on me saying that I'm have a business running there. So my son got investigated for sixty days saying that's the daycare running there.
So although what you're saying may be true, or even if it is true, we're not here to consider that, we're here to consider...
If it's true, it's unfortunate, but it is not material to our consideration of the application, which is purely on the merits. And if you've been wronged, I feel bad for you, but that's not this board's job to determine whether you have or haven't been wronged. Our job is to consider the application objectively.
I understand, I understand what you're saying.
And that's why we're asking the questions that we're asking.
I understand what you're saying. I understand exactly what you're saying. But my point is, you know, if something is not right, they're not supposed to call the state on me and say something, it's not right.
Okay.
Okay? And it's a, okay, I know, it's annoying, because, you know, it hurts.
It's your son, isn't it?
It hurts to be a daycare provider since two thousand and five, and I'm in New Rochelle, and I buy the high school, New Rochelle High School. Five thousand kids goes to school there. They want traffic? That's traffic.
Sure.
There's no traffic over there.
I've looked at the Cove, one eighty-eight Cove Road. Yeah, I've looked, I didn't go up there, but I've looked at it on a map, and I'm familiar with the area, and it is a different property. In many ways, it's a deeper property. It's, yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm, yeah, no, I, so...
And the parents have to be forced by...
Correct, but that's not the property that we're looking at right now. And New Rochelle is a different community as well, as Eastchester. And, you know, I guess if you, if you have a home on Cove Road right next to a very large high school, New Rochelle High School, you're expecting a lot of traffic, and you're expecting, you know, it's part of what you're buying into. This area here is a purely residential area, and this is, so that's why, we've heard that from a number of the neighbors, you know, many of whom don't have a particular issue with daycare or anything, but there is a natural tendency among all of us to not want change in our neighborhoods.
It's a commercial building, and it used to be a doctor's office.
Okay, so can we move, can we move on, guys? Thank you. We're going to move on to the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. My mom's very passionate about the project and childcare. She's also a foster parent for many years. She fosters four children currently. Yeah, just lifelong caregiver, lover of children, and yeah.
So I think if we don't have any more comments, you've heard our comments, and now the public, I imagine, has comments too, so we're going to, so just to the public, we know there's a lot of you here, please keep, keep your comments as concise and pointed as possible, and if you're just going to repeat something the person before has said, please try and refrain from that so that everyone gets an opportunity to speak.
Mr. Chairman, just to prevent us from getting into the weeds too much, I think it would be wise to caution the public to address this application as opposed to other locations or things outside of town. If they have comments, they're certainly appropriate, but for this application...
That's a good point. Let's do that, too, and please try and keep them as brief as possible so everyone gets a chance to speak.
And we did hear extensively from the public at the last hearing. I would prefer not to have a regurgitation of exactly what we heard last time. It's, you know, we have a record of it, we've read through it, it's part of the application. Certainly, I don't mind your alluding or reminding us of certain things, that, certain issues that may be out there, but I really would prefer not to hear all of the same stuff all over again, okay?
And before we have any members of the public, I just wanted to note that we did receive a lot of written correspondence before the meeting. A lot of it is posted to the website. We did receive some emails today, both in opposition and in favor of the application. We have two applications in favor, two emails in favor of the application citing a need for daycare, and several emails in opposition that are posted to the website. So I can summarize them if at any point you need to, but we can hear the public comments.
But hang on, just, is anybody in this room here in favor of this application wants to speak on his behalf? Okay, thank you. All right, you're up.
Good evening, members of the board and community members. My name is Joseph Pellicari, Ten Knox Road in Eastchester, speaking on behalf of my mother and my father. Actually, it's my dad's birthday this evening, so happy birthday. So to his credit, my father's been the proud owner of Five Downer Avenue since nineteen eighty-nine. I've had the good fortune of living there, so my last comments last month were sort of more personal, this is more logic-based. The town of Eastchester has taken steps to improve that Harney Road-Downer junction since nineteen eighty-nine. I don't know if you guys are aware of how many modifications to that corner have occurred. And those modifications have occurred because that intersection has been deemed what? Unsafe. Period. There used to be a right-hand turn at the corner of Harney Road and Downer Avenue. You can no longer make that right-hand turn. This town has deemed that that turn has been dangerous as recent as I believe twelve months ago. Okay? No one is attacking a business owner, but when a driveway that is going to be the main drop-off point is only thirty feet from the turn, that you no longer are able to make a right-hand turn, you tell me how you have a hundred vehicles traveling, a vehicle a minute, are you going to make that left turn into the property? This is, this is something where the town needs to say, we need to evaluate this and make a decision. We can't keep coming to these meetings. We're not in opposition of any community member. We're here to discuss the reasonable use of this property. That corner is deemed unsafe. If you enter and you make that turn, and you're waiting for that traffic to move through that light, and you're going to go and make that left-hand swing, and I know this because I've done it for, since I'm seventeen years old driving, if you're going to make that left-hand swing into those driveways, our driveway is the one directly adjacent to it, if there's a vehicle approaching from Harney Road making that right-hand turn onto Downer Avenue is essentially a blind turn. Have you guys observed the traffic there? I mean, what's been done? This is not an attack on a business owner. This is an attack on the usefulness of that property for this purpose.
Well, hang on a second.
You cannot justify, I have a child. Let me make one more point. I have a child. I took her to daycare every single morning. I picked her up from her daycare every single day. There is no way you're taking a three and under or five and under in and out of a vehicle in less than one minute.
Right, so...
Impossible.
Just to set the record straight, they have the right to come here and ask for a special permit use. There's nothing wrong with that.
Of course.
And we're listening to them, we're hearing them, and then we're going to decide based on what we've seen. So they're not the devil, they're doing what they're allowed to do. We understand what you're saying, too, and saying it's unsafe, I'm not quite sure what unsafe means. I know exactly what it means, but right now, it's an observation, and I kind of agree with you, too, but...
Right, it's just, the last thing I would want to see is anyone get injured.
Yeah, so...
And it really is, it's a dangerous, that left-hand turn from Harney Road into Downer Avenue, that, in nineteen eighty-nine, that was actually, there was a, there was a, two lanes at the exit of Downer approaching Harney. There was an entrance right next to that, and then there was another entrance off of Harney if you were making the right into Green Knolls. That has changed. That traffic pattern has now turned into a single lane, a single entrance from Harney, and a single entrance from, no, Harney approaching from the Bronx River Parkway. So you've taken steps and taxpayer dollars to make this change for a good reason. You know, we want to keep it safe, we want the neighborhood safe. We're talking about a potential twenty-five percent increase in traffic on a residential road. You know, it's substantial. Those are my remarks. I really, I just wanted to make those statements because historically, that intersection has been problematic.
Great, thank you. Happy birthday to Dad.
Good evening. My name is Alexander Colesy. I live to next door to this house that they want to convert into something, daycare. And I have three years living in this town. Since I moved in this town, I have two years trying to find, to get a permit, to pull a permit for work. So when I presented a permit in this town, I believe I did it professionally. I hired an architect. I hired a contractor to perform the work. I didn't come in this room to waste everybody's time, sorry, to say, I want to do this, or I want to do a project, or whatever you have in mind, or you read the bylaws, what the town gives you. So I see in this screen some numbers, twenty, thirty, three cars you can park, then from three cars, you go to five and two more. When by the Department of Building of the town, I was told here, we're going to measure every inch that you're going to build in paper. If one inch is more, you're going to knock it down, you're going to plant gas. And it's so easy for some people, they have the privilege to come here. Hundreds of people waste time, and they're not happy, just to, you know, and then they think that they deserve a privilege. Why I didn't have that privilege, too?
Well, hang on, can we stick to the facts here? Can you just stick to the case and the facts and a little bit less editorializing?
They didn't approve me, the town didn't approve me to have a ramp to go up to the front door. They told me you're not entitled.
So this is kind of getting away from what we've asked you.
If these guys are not approved for such many parking spots, for, to have a turn, to go from Harney Road and to enter from one street and go to another street, why would you waste time to all these people here to have it here in one? First of all, the town is not going to approve any construction or any modification.
Sir, this is a process, and for those who are watching at home, the applicant has the right to bring in an application and ask this board to review that application. The board is obligated to review this. It's not a question of why they did it a certain way or they didn't. The board is here to consider it, not necessarily the way they did it. And I'm going to really ask you to limit your comments to concerns that you have about this particular project as opposed to your own project with the building department that's not on tonight's agenda.
And I will add that nobody is being forced to come here tonight. Everyone's here because this is a public hearing. They're here willingly because they want their voice to be heard.
I did my concern last time, I'm not repeating any of what I mentioned last time. This time, what I'm repeating and what I'm adding is this, that if someone thinks that was treated unfair from this town, is not the, is not that house, it's me in Tudor Lane, that I was not treated fairly at all.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I believe I would not be heard at all, I would, I was told from Carlos, don't go, they're not going to allow you one inch.
Okay.
This retaining wall to be higher or lower.
You really can't comment on your own application or dealings with the building department. If you have objections to this property, you have the right to voice them, but it has to be directed to... has to be directed to this particular application.
Okay. So now, what I say is that if you people want to build the trust in people, then treat them all, you know, the same way. Where's, you know, where's an architect or drawing for this application? I didn't see no drawing. I didn't see any survey. In, that's not the survey, so.
But hold on, that's, we're the board. We ask those questions, right? If you're sitting here, you could tell them that. We do it for you. If there's something else you want to ask, we can, but right now, we're kind of acting on your behalf. We're not here just approving things, we're acting on your behalf. You tell us your concerns, we have our own concerns, we address.
And last concern is this, this town gave too much attention to this project. You know, that, it is, I don't know how long they're going to drag everybody here.
We're hoping not to drag it out.
Another 10, 10 more meetings.
If anyone's dragging this out a little bit right now, it could be you. So, so you, so you meant, okay, great.
Good evening. My name is Pellicari Grace. I live at Five Downer. And I, 36 years. And I can tell you the amount of traffic that we have on Downer. And when there is something that is going on on the street, that even if there is the truck of the highway that they're doing their work, there is a really, really, really bad congestion. Me personally, if I have to cross the street to go from my driveway to the sidewalk, I have to be very careful because even if it's the people of the neighborhood, sometimes they run like crazy. Now, can we imagine what is going to happen when we're going to have all these cars that they're going to come and they're going to make a drop-off? Now, let me explain you this, because sometimes people, when they don't live on the premises, they do not know as much as I know. Because first of all, and as everybody knows, I'm an outside person. I do my work in the house and I'm an outside person. I love to stay outside. I try to help as many people as I can. And I'm surprised that there is nobody of the highway here, because if there was somebody here, they will tell you how picky I am about my neighborhood. Okay? So when a car coming from Harney Road is going to come to drop the children at 32 Harney, it's going to go Harney, straight to Harney, 32. There is four parking, where is that? Okay? Because it used to be a garage and the previous, previous owner used that as for his own good because he had the, he was a chiropractor and he had the service on Downer. But if you're going to go with your car and you're going to park the car and to leave the children on Harney Road, you're going to create such a big mess that for now, just the tag of the divider goes down. When that is going to happen, there is going to be a line from 32 Harney all the way to Garth Road. This is what, if they come from Harney coming on Downer, they're going to make a turn and they're going to stop near 32 Down, 32 Harney, which at that point is not anymore 32 Harney, it's, it's Downer, that street. We have a poll that says no standing and no parking because there is the bus in the morning that stops to take the people that they go to work. Now, this is my situation. As I have to cross the street, if there is a lot of car coming, I have to say to myself, which way I'm going, this way, this way. Sometimes I yell and sometimes I get yelled back because they don't want to stop. And sometimes they give you even the finger salute. Now, can we imagine what's going to happen when all these cars? I'm not against the daycare. I love children. And that guy can say that I go play with his children from the fence, just to hear the voice of the children. On top of that, I'm going to say, if the owner of the house thinks that that fence, it's appropriate for the children to play outside, they are deadly wrong because me as a person, I can go under. What's going to happen if a child goes from the, where is the playground, which is not playground, runs in my driveway from under the fence? What's going to happen? Who am I going, who I'm going to go talk to? It's not fenced in. I love children and just to think about it, the amount of traffic that we're going to get, now I run from one side to the other, now I'm not going to go outside no more. The people that are here, they all know me that I'm outside constantly.
So.
I love my neighborhood. If there is the sign that it gets missing, I'm the one calling the person. There is a sign missing. The sidewalk needs to be cleaned up. I'm the one calling. Sometimes they don't even want to know me. When they see that it's me, they don't even pick up the phone. I don't mind. Sometimes I'll be in pain in the neck, but I don't care. But I want to see that my neighborhood is going to be done the way it's going to be done.
Will you excuse me?
I see children by themselves sometimes walking and I'm worried. Now, what's going to happen? And one other thing, it's since couple of years now, we have all these cars with mufflers that they're making so much noise.
So can I interrupt, please?
I said, I wonder how the children.
Excuse me? Can I interrupt? I, with all due respect, I think you've made your point.
Okay.
You don't have to tell us about mufflers. We understand this traffic.
I appreciate, and don't get me wrong, I love my East Chester town and I know love my Green Knolls.
Thank you.
Good evening. Louis Heviet for Tudor Lane. Good evening.
Can you speak up a little bit more? Am I right there?
Not really.
Okay. Louis Heviet for Tudor Lane. Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Fellow neighbors. I agree with all my previous neighbors here that spoke before me and I can't be as eloquent as Ms. Grace. So, and I can attest that she loves kids. My little one, Grace was her, his first friend when we moved into the neighborhood, so. All right, so back to the matter at hand here. So just to clarify something, because there was a lot of confusion in, in the application, the emails, the back and forth, we don't have a traffic study here, okay? I just want to clarify that. We just have a collection of data provided by New York State DOT, which is publicly available. I want to point out to the data that was shown before, the 15-minute interval that is part of the package is from one week pre-COVID in August. So August is, what happens in August? There's no schools. People on vacations. It's not really reflective of actual real traffic data, a typical day of traffic data. I'm not going to repeat what everybody has said here, but you already observed that it's going to be a circulation issue around that area. If you want to make an informed decision, I'm going to ask you to request, and I don't know if it's the town, the applicant, but you need a traffic study, issue and sign by a professional traffic engineer, professional PE, okay? Professional engineer. Not only that, you're going to, this is going to impact that intersection, which is managed by the county. I would strongly suggest that you involve the county traffic engineer for an opinion on how the operation of that intersection will be impacted by the trip generation this is going to generate, you know, at that location. I also echo my, my previous neighbor that mentioned, we're not against small business. I mean, we're all for it. But this is just not the location for this, for this function. I mean, it's just not going to work. So that's my recommendation. My plea to you is to ask for a traffic study, signed by PE, and review, get an opinion from the county traffic engineer. Thank you.
So just for the record, we understand that we have the ability to hire consultants to opine on conditions. And if we need one, we will request one.
Okay, perfect.
If we believe it's necessary.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I think the, yeah, I think, I think the applicant has been very fair. In addition to presenting the 2019 data, he's presented data that suggests that the numbers maybe even have gone up more recently. So I don't think he's trying to hide anything or mislead. It does look like, and obviously all of the focus that we have had at this meeting so far on traffic suggests that traffic is certainly a significant consideration here. You can go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Lee Smallwood. I live a couple of blocks away. Actually, didn't come here for this topic tonight, but felt compelled to speak up just with a couple of views.
Take it out and stand up straight if you mind.
Yeah.
Sorry, a little tall. It's okay if I hold, yeah. Yeah. We live close by and I think it's definitely a busy road and busy intersection. I train jujitsu in White Plains and this often makes me late getting there, so I see that. I also have a three-year-old, so the comment on a minute to get a child in and out of the car is definitely generous, let's say. So agree with that. That said, we had a really hard time finding daycare for our daughter when we moved to the area, certainly in walking distance, which I know my, was my wife's dream, actually. So we take her up to Hartsdale every day. And we would love to find somewhere walkable for her. So it's, so my takeaway here is that no one seems to be against small business or daycare, but that traffic is like a major issue. So I would just be curious of how many parents and how many people interested would be within walking distance, because I certainly think that if it was available, that would be something that would be interesting to us. And maybe that would appease some of the concerns of the, of the community at large. So, yeah, I guess that's all I have to say. I mean, obviously, there's been some degree of traffic anyway with it being a doctor's office, but we definitely share the concern around traffic, but definitely see the need for, for more daycare, especially at the younger ages in the area, so whatever that's worth.
Great, thank you. What application did you come for?
Sorry?
Which application are you here for?
Uh, well, so, so what's interesting is we came for the 86 Woodruff because we thought it backed onto our property, but it's actually on the other side of the road. So it's actually completely irrelevant. We're actually having our date night here at the Town Planning Committee.
Stick around and just keep commenting. Thank you.
But nonetheless, wanted to share that as a sort of neutral perspective, so.
Great, thank you. I guess you're going to be followed by another proponent.
Hello? Hello? Adam Schellenberger, East Chester resident, Glen Road. I also didn't come here for this. I came for 210 Marble Dale. But I also feel compelled to speak up. It is incredibly expensive to have childcare. I believe you said 15 is your max capacity? So that's a maximum capacity of 15 cars with the potential that very likely most people who have one kid have multiple kids who may want to drop more than one child off. So you're talking about potentially less than 15. 15 is the absolute worst-case scenario. Looking at the pictures, you have three curb stops in your driveway there, so that is definitely going to be working construction. That you're, I'm pretty sure you're very comfortably going to fit three cars there. But 15, maximum 15 possible cars, excluding anybody who's going to walk their child there, excluding anybody who's going to drop off multiple kids. I understand everyone clearly has a, big concerns about traffic and safety, of course, but it seems like there was already a residential business working there. So I think it's worth considering, if you didn't have to have a specific, what is it called? If you didn't have to ask for permission because the employees are working there, I believe you.
Variance, yeah.
A variance. I don't think you would have to ask for any permission at that point, right? Because then you would qualify, so.
That's not necessarily true.
Okay, well.
This is a special permit that has to be granted by the planning board.
Of course, of course. But, so I'm, I wasn't intending on speaking for, for this, but I think it's worth trying to explore other options, even if you were to limit where they could approach from or some other way to make a business possible there. That's all.
Great, thank you. Thank you.
Hi, Amanda Keller, 66 Stratford. I was not at the previous meeting. You know, I have participated in some of the petitions and things that have gone around. Certainly, we've, we've addressed all of the traffic concerns, I think, you know, and the beeline bus and the, and the school buses and weather and trying to get kids out of school in the, you know, out of your car in the rain and all those kinds of things. I do think that the, the point that was brought up about the county, though I did take your point quite well, when we did our own sort of traffic evaluation, because I was nearly hit at that intersection and some of our neighbors were hit at that intersection, Lieutenant Graff did a very nice job of trying to help us. What we originally wanted was sort of what is on Fisher Avenue right now, that kind of blinking, flashing, you know, watch out, there's a pedestrian in the crosswalk. And we were unable to do that with Lieutenant Graff because it is indeed a county road and the county was not willing to police, police Harney in that way. So that's a consideration, something that won't show up anywhere is that, whatever we do. But the big thing that I just wanted to bring up is that, you know, a lot of people have brought up the chiropractor that was there before. It was a single resident who lived there. There were three spaces. Potentially, they were only seeing one patient at a time. They were seeing them throughout the day, not at, obviously, you know, it wasn't a conglomeration at one time or another. And it was just the resident and then the patient. So you're talking about two people. There really was not an impact. With that being said, that, that was granted so long ago, you know, now we're looking at something quite different, as you know. And I would also just point out that while it would be great if this was all folks in the neighborhood walking there and that it was a service that could be provided, I have children, that's certainly not something we can mandate. It's not something that, you know, they can't send their kid there for a year and decide, well, I'm moving on, and then other folks come in. Although this may be outside the, the scope, I'm not sure, so forgive me if it is. But we are, you know, about a mile and a half from the Scarsdale train station and another, we do not have two-hour parking the way that some of the streets that are closer to the train station have. And I also have a concern that folks might just decide to park up and down the residential streets and walk on to become commuters and then come back at a later time. I don't know if that, that works out here, but I'd just like to put it on the record. And I appreciate your consideration, the kindness that you've given. And respectfully, we do, I, we are not against a small business and we look forward to having you as neighbors in, in the, in the town. We're just not sure that this particular property is appropriate to have 15 children, you know, outside time and loud, I mean, our residents didn't sign on for that either, to have 15 kids, you know, like a school outside. 15 kids is a lot. So, thank you.
Good evening, board and fellow residents. Barbara Torelli, 18 Vassap Place. 36 years ago, I moved into a quiet residential neighborhood with limited traffic. Have you people at the board visited this, you know, proposed daycare center? Because if you have, you'll realize that if there was ever a place not to put this residence, that would be the place. It's a bottleneck. I could tell you from personal experience that this traffic in and out constantly, I don't know how in the world anyone would ever be able to, you know, to spark kids from their cars into the house, leaving their cars on the street, you know, having their kids, you know, get acclimated with their residents and then be, you know, back into the cars without a, more bottleneck. It's a bottleneck without having this daycare center. So if you can, I would appreciate if you would just take time and visit the area and see for yourself what a nightmare this would be. Like I said, I purchased this place 36 years ago to have a nice, quiet residential area. And if you let this application go, you would disrupt this neighborhood like there was never disrupted before. Please consider a denial for this application. Thank you very much.
Barbara Plasky, 97 Maple Street. I was formerly a, lived in the Green Knolls-Greenville community for 25 years. I served on its board during that time. I think everything is going to come down to this statement in Section 12, Special Permits, D. Standards, number three. "Operations in conjunctions with any special permit use will not be more objectionable, will not..." -- will not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, traffic, fumes, vibration, or other characteristics than would be operations of permitted uses not requiring a special permit." And so, in these letters that we've seen, these applications that have come back and forth, it's obvious as an applicant, you're addressing this, and you're trying to mitigate your place versus what the public may seem of it, may think of it. And so, traffic that has been discussed numerous times is one of them, and I think that a lot of this application is gonna come down to that. And just throwing some statistics out there about this, we received the, this in the letter in the last application, what I viewed on the screen just recently looks different from this. Maybe it's newer, but these are the numbers that I evaluated. And one of the statements by the applicant is that, well, you know, already it's taking 697 vehicles over the day, so it should be able to take another fifteen to twenty-five, or actually thirty to fifty.
I'm not quite sure. I'm not quite sure, that's the intent. It's just numbers right now.
That's my point, it's just a number. You're saying that Downer takes, can take 697 cars in a day, additional cars in a day, and therefore, being able to take another thirty to fifty appears small in comparison to that number, and so it should be able to accommodate that. That's the way I read that letter.
Oh, okay.
All right? So, I just broke it down, because it does show your average use, traffic between, at rush hours, between seven and nine, and five and six-thirty, and the applicant showed that on the screen before. And just to show you the impact of those numbers, based on this study, in the morning, if you had fifteen additional cars, that would be a nineteen percent increase. If you had twenty-five more cars, that would be a thirty-one percent increase. So, to make an analogy, if you got up in the morning, and you got on the scale, and all of a sudden, you weigh twenty percent more, that is a substantial number, it's not a one percent, it's not a two percent, it's a substantial number.
Yeah, but you're saying that based upon an additional twenty-five cars, when they're talking about fifteen student capacity?
I don't know what the capacity is, I'm going by numbers.
That's what it is.
That we're public.
So, that twenty-five cars is not a realistic number.
The applicant has asked for fifteen.
The twenty-five cars is not a realistic number.
Then what is a realistic number?
They are proposing fifteen students.
Okay, and if a one student --
So, twenty-five cars is not a realistic number for fifteen students.
Okay, all right, let me address that. All right. The application estimates, not says, it estimates, right now, fifteen. We don't know how that number is generated. We do know that the state, after we would give the applicant, this approval, the state would then come in and review it, and decide on, is fifteen okay? Maybe it's only ten? Maybe we'll accept forty? Eastchester special permit allows up to twenty-five. So, if we go down this road of saying, "Well, it'll only be fifteen," is that going to be written into the approval, or could it become twenty-five if the state comes back and says, you know, "You can have more than twenty-five"? So, that's why I'm trying to say that if you're going to address traffic, you wanna look at how many potential cars there are. We're talking about, the applicant wants to focus this on fifteen, but if all of a sudden, after an approval starts to be in play, it becomes twenty-five, we can't go back to that. And so, if Eastchester permits twenty-five, I'd like to talk about twenty-five. If you wanna just talk about fifteen, I'll stay with fifteen.
You do have the authority to condition the approval on the number of students that are proposed.
That the application is for.
Okay, so let's say you do a condition, just to argue this point out, all right? This goes before the zoning, and zoning says fine, and the condition is made fifteen. The state comes back afterwards and says, "You can have more." You don't think that the applicant's gonna come by and ask for another variance to go up to twenty-five?
I don't think they can, and I don't think they would if that was a condition, but I really think, aside from the numbers, there are mechanical issues that represent safety concerns. Yes, right.
I'm getting there.
The argument you're making is not --
I'm getting there, I'm just saying that the applicant --
But that's the issue.
Okay.
Can you have your next point?
Absolutely, it's the issue. But the applicant represents in a letter, trying to, in an application, trying to say that this project is not going to create any major change to the area, no impact on the area. I'm trying to show you that it does create an impact. If you, by adding fifteen cars, you increase the amount of cars coming through by twenty percent, that's an impact, isn't it?
Okay, point taken. We understand, thank you.
Okay. The application also seems to imply that the road should be able to take twenty percent or fifty percent more. How does it come up with that number? I analyze it this way. Right now, the amount of traffic on that road is quite an objection to that community. You've heard it in this meeting, you see it in the emails, it is a known cut-through. There are, there was a time where they wanted to go in with traffic bumps, there is a monitor up there that tells you what your speed is going up that road, there's been a lot of discussions with the intersection. And so, yes, if you're adding another twenty, twenty percent or so into that, onto that road, it does create an impact, and it goes back to what this section says about, "Operations in conjunction with a special permit will not be more objectionable." So, another aspect of this is if you've, I went there just this morning again, and I saw what I think the first speaker saw, exactly where this driveway is relative to Downer, Scarsdale Avenue, and Harney, and you come off of Harney, and within a very short distance, you cross Scarsdale, and you start to go up Downer, and it's right in that, that's kinda, the driveway is kinda diagonally into that. So, a person pulls in to drop their child off, the hardest thing is to back up. Pulling in is easy, backing up is difficult, we all know that, we all have driveways we back out of, we all go shopping.
Mr. Pulaski, these points have been made, we've heard them from other people, do you have any additional points that haven't been made that you want to share with us?
I just thought I was making a better point there.
It was made very well the first time, and we --
Should've led with it.
And we kind of figured it out ourselves.
That was my major point. Something I have not heard anyone talk about is ADA, the handicap code.
No.
All of this parking is, are we fine with ADA? Access to the playgrounds, that is built into a hill, so if you access it at the ground level, you have to go up a number of steps, and the playgrounds are at three levels. So, I don't know how ADA is being addressed there.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good point, I don't know if we need to consider that for site plan approval, except for the parking?
Yeah, that's something that we typically evaluate at the building permit stage.
Right.
The building inspector has not identified an ADA accessible space as required for the drop-off pickup, because these are, this is the drop-off pickup area, not a formal parking area, even though they have to be the space size, so I can double-check with him if one of those spaces should be ADA compliant in that two-space lot.
But as far as the interior, it really has no bearing on?
Right, that really doesn't go to the special permit criteria, but will certainly have to be addressed at the building permit stage.
Good point, but it's not us.
Well, I just suggest that it be addressed while you're deciding whether to proceed on or not, if there's, because of the fact that that's built into a hill, there is quite a bit that would have to be adjusted in order to accommodate ADA moving children from the ground floor up to these play areas. So, that's it, thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Can you, I don't mean to pressure you, but can you keep this, you know, to five or 10 minutes, please? I know Bill got, Bob got a lot more than that, right? Do your best.
Anyone who has to leave is welcome to leave. I will do my absolute best, I also submitted my detailed letter, and because it was received at 4:02, it was not posted and was not read, and at the start of this meeting, you did ask me to take you through it, so I'll do my best. I think what I have to say is a little different, it adds a lot to what my neighbors have said.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Sorry?
Could you identify yourself?
Yes, I spoke last time, my name is Josephine Bocelink, I live at 40 Downer Avenue, and my husband kindly helped me with these phone boards, I hope they're visible, yes, thank you. So, many of my neighbors have said, "Hope you go there, hope you see it." I have brought the intersection to you, I have brought our neighborhood to you, and I think you'll get a really good impression of what we're faced with here. What's very different, and with all due respect, the applicant has mentioned a few things, and I do want you to know that we --
Can you address them?
Can you address your comments to the Board?
Yes, sorry. I do want the applicant and the Board to know that, as my other neighbors have said, we support small businesses, we have nothing against daycare, we love children, children need to be taken care of, and we welcome new neighbors with open arms. This is just not the place for a daycare center. This is a map of our neighborhood, and what you see here is very different from what you might have where New Rochelle High School is. You have a neighborhood with only two, and let me go through it, only two ways in and out of the neighborhood. See here, you have Scarsdale Avenue going to Stratford Road around, and then you have all the streets in the middle here, Downer, Warwick, Bronson, Rutgers, and Vassar, all these streets have no outlet, it's a cul-de-sac, it's closed all around. I separated Tudor Lane, Tudor Lane is part of Green Oles, and then we have Greenville, which is less affected, so I haven't shown them on the map. Tudor Lane has a way in and out on Harney, so they're less affected, they have an entryway. Here, for all these streets, it's over a hundred and eighty houses, and many of them have two and three cars each. There is no way in or out other than here and here. Here is where the daycare is proposed to be, exactly in the intersection of Harney, as we said, Downer and Scarsdale Avenue. This is the critical spot, because here, you go to the Bronx River Parkway, this way, you go to White Plains Road, that way, you go to the Metro North Train Station. You can see why it's the key entrance and egress from the neighborhood. This side is a very dangerous intersection, because it's a very steep hill. We don't want to send all the cars that way, because this place is gummed up in the morning and in the evening. We don't want to send cars through on the Tudor Lane Avenue in and out, because there's no traffic light here, and I've had to make the left, even the right, from Tudor, I don't like it, it's very dangerous, and the cars swing around from this curve very fast. So, I don't even, if I lived on Tudor, I wouldn't even go that way, I'd probably go around the other way. So, this is what we're faced with, it's not like where New Rochelle High School is, where all the other daycare centers are that they showed us in the application that are nearby. Those streets are more like grids, you can go in and out many ways, you cannot do that here. So, this is very important to understand. This is not about neighbors being impatient and not wanting to deal with a little bit of traffic, this is literally our only way in and out, besides the other way, it's a lot of homes and just two ways in and out. So, here, I have a picture, I'll try to run through them quickly, but what you, you've been asking a lot about how you maneuver, and I think the picture show, and you have copies of all these things that I handed out prior to the meeting. This is, would be the daycare center. We have a divider, and we have a way in through this road from the Bronx River Parkway, Harney, you go this way, then this way goes to Scarsdale Avenue, going in from Scarsdale Avenue, this way going out. Now, if you see you're coming in, you immediately have to turn, yield, like the cars from Scarsdale are here, you have to yield, and you have to turn in immediately. There are these spokes, I don't even know what to call them, dividers, you know, those things that stick up?
Ballards.
So, as soon as you pass it, you have to go, womb, right into that driveway with two spots, two spots. And I heard that they need, I just heard you say that they need four spots for the children, they need two spots for the residents, and three spots for the people that work there, because I think I heard last time that your mom, your sister, and I assumed yourself, might be three people. But even if it's just the two residents or the two workers, and we need four, that's six spots, there's two spots, it's insurmountable, there's no point to keep debating, it can't be fixed. This is a deficiency that cannot be remedied. This is the aerial view, same thing, you see, that's what I was describing. And then, this picture here is just showing as if I was coming from Harney Road, and it shows you right here how close it is. I just wanted you to have these visuals, and if you, my mouth is getting very dry, I need to get some water, so just one moment. I apologize, but I have a cold, and sometimes you get dried out. Okay. So, here is another picture, and this is just to show you, Bronx River is there, this is Harney Road, this is where you would come in to Downer. I only want to show you that this lane, the left lane, is turn-only, that means you have one lane, one lane to go straight or to turn into Downer. That means if there's a gum up here because of these two parking spots I can't get in, and it backs up on Harney, that whole road is going to stop moving. That's a serious problem, that's a very serious problem, and this is a very small space, and let's say you say, "Well, people aren't gonna just stop there," what are they gonna do? They're gonna go past, and then what? Back up into the intersection when the two spots are free, and then go this way, or pass it and do a U-turn? That intersection cannot accommodate this kind of activity, even if it's ten cars, fifteen cars, it cannot accommodate it. I also put this here, because you have to know that there's a bus stop right there. That intersection, here's the map, it says right here, Harney Road and Downer Avenue is the beeline Route 64 bus. So, this intersection has a traffic light, and then -- So this intersection has a traffic light, and then the front of the house on the Downer side, it's one lane queuing up to the traffic light. No parking in front of the house whatsoever, then the two spots. And so you also have the bus there. And what are the bus times? They're the same times. So you look at the bus time. It's 6:08, 6:50, 7:44 in the morning. In the evening, it's 5:49, 6:40, 7:20. That's a problem. We have big, also same intersection. We have the big school buses that pass, the little school buses that pass. Children need to go to school. It's all the same intersection. That's where everybody has to go to catch the Metro North train. We have no sidewalks. We have pedestrians walking also the same way to get to the train. It's really not the right place for a business. Now, you might say, "Well, there was a business." It was always a solo practitioner. I've lived in the neighborhood almost 30 years. It was always a solo practitioner. It was never a big business. This is too big of a business for this private home, right at the beginning of the neighborhood. It, it just doesn't work. I also included some pictures of the house itself. The property is not really built for a business of this type. I will say, one of the, one of the requirements under 12H5 for an intermittent daycare center is, is appropriate amount of space for the children to play outside. 700 square, 750 square feet is the minimum required amount. The application does, shows that they do not have this amount of space. Let me explain why. They have said they have 944 square feet. This is incorrect. This is only if you count the roof of the first floor here. You were just talking about ADA. Definitely not ADA compliant, but let's not even have, we don't even have to go that far. This is the house that would be the daycare center. What used to be the garage has a sliding door. The only access, only access to the play space is coming out the sliding door, bringing the children to the driveway on Harney Road that abuts Harney Road Street where the cars are racing down as if it was a highway. Children have to go down two steps. These are very small children. Their age is 18, last meeting they said 18 months to pre-K, but mostly toddlers. So they go down two steps into the driveway. Then they have to walk up a series of three staircases, all stone and cement. So you, the walk, they have to walk up this little staircase to get to the first portion of the outdoor space. Then at the back of that, they have to walk up a few more steps. You'll see more pictures of it. And then they have to go up a few more steps, and they end up on this roof. This is a rooftop deck. This is not an outdoor play space for pre-K children. It is outdoors, but it's not at ground level. So I, my interpretation is that outdoor space that pre-K children are expected to play in should be at ground level. I've never heard of a rooftop deck for pre-K children. I would not have my pre-K children playing there. But you'll see pictures of also, besides it being a rooftop deck, why it's unacceptable.
Just, just a question. As far as whether they're registering as a daycare or not, is there a separate application as far as whether or not the property inside is up to regulation?
Yes, so daycare centers are regulated by the New York State Department of Social Services. So in addition to the special permit to operate from the town, we don't really get into the particulars of how the internal workings are operated. They would need to get a license from the New York State Department of Social Services.
So it sounds like there's going to be a separate review upon that type of information, just to make sure you're aware.
Okay, thank you. But I will show you the photographs. So this is the, the first set of the three staircases I spoke of is here. This is the outdoor play area. The others, the other set of steps is here, and then you come around through this narrow area, and you go up the steps here, and then you're on this deck. And that is a fine deck to sit on, but not for pre-K kids to play. And here's a better picture, so you can see the steps going up. You can see the gap. There's a complete gap here in the fence. Children can run straight out to Harney Road. And this is the rooftop deck that has a skylight right smack in the middle. Also not very safe, not very safe for children, and the gate. I mean, the fencing, I think you can slip out the bottom. I think they can jump over the top or fall off. It's pretty low. I know as a kid, I would stick my leg into these kinds of rungs, and it would get stuck. I think kids do that a lot. Maybe that's not your purview, but I did want you to get the good visual there. This, I don't expect you to be able to actually read it, but I'll tell you, these two, these two are what was in the application. This is that 2019 data here and here. But I just wanted to say that using the Department of Transportation data is not very helpful. They very rarely update it, so that's why you see that this August 2019 date is there. It's already six years outdated. But I did, my husband and I, mostly, my husband did go back and, and pull up the previous data that was available. It was very interesting, because it was from 2014, but it was April. And if you compare the data five years prior, but it was April, not when people are on vacation, not when kids are in school, you'll see that the average, the average number of cars from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM in 2014, in April, was 23% higher. And then this, where we, where the extrapolation was done from the Department of Transportation site, about 80 average cars in the drop-off time and 84 in the pickup time. If you use the 2014 data, you got an average of 107 and 126. That is a difference of 34% higher in the drop-off, 50% higher on the pickup. Now, both of these sets of data are inadequate as a traffic, a traffic study. They're extremely outdated. And i- if, if, if the board still feels that this needs to be looked at, as you said, you could order traffics, a formal traffic study to be done. In my humble opinion, I don't think it's necessary. I think that the deficiencies in the application are insurmountable. They cannot be corrected. There will never be an ability to have the required parking spaces. While I guess it's possible to get a variance, you're not going to get a variance to that extent. I don't see how, because they have two spaces, and they need a minimum of four plus two or three at least. So that's, that's what I wanted to show you picture-wise, but just to, just to go over a few other things. In my opinion, this application does not meet the standards for a special use permit under 12D2, 12D1, 2, or 3. The, the, the requirements that, that the applicant is supposed to meet, I mean, I don't want to read it all out, but just trying to summarize here. The first one says that the location of the site with respect to streets giving access to it must be in harmony with the appropriate and orderly development and use. Everything we've heard about traffic, parking. The, the, the location with respect to the streets, it cannot result in, in a harmonious and orderly development and, and use. I mean, it, it, it just, it's just unfortunately for the applicant, it just doesn't seem that the deficiencies can possibly be remedied. They're incapable of being remedied. Here, you've already said, Green Knolls has no mixed-use buildings. They did cite mixed-use across the street on Harney Road. That's not really relevant to this application, where all the activity is going to be on Downer Avenue in our cul-de-sac neighborhood. The, the daycare center abuts only single-family homes. The location is at the critical intersection, as we all explained. The conditions will be extremely unsafe when people are backing out, making U-turns. There's school buses, beeline buses, pedestrians. The, the, the traffic on Harney Road, as I've explained, is going to be extremely negatively impacted. And in, and the other way in and out of our neighborhood, where I spoke about the steep decline, where we have Maples going into Harney, a person was actually killed at that intersection. So that's definitely not safe. And as I mentioned, the other daycare centers are not comparable. None of them are positioned in a cul-de-sac neighborhood with only two ways in and out for over 800 homes. That's just going to the criteria 1 of 12D. Criteria 2 says the location, nature, and height of the buildings, walls, and fences are such that the special use permit will not hinder or discourage the use of addition, of adjacent land and buildings. That's not met. This, this, the entire setup is inappropriate to a daycare center, and the existing fences allow children to, that literally escape into neighbors' yards, run, run into the Harney Road, and it's, and the walls, fences, et cetera, are inadequate to prevent them from falling off the rooftop outdoor play area. That was criteria 2. I don't believe that that was met. Criteria 3 is, is even worse. That's the one that says that the operations will not be objectionable to nearby properties, and that the park, parking areas are adequate to achieve maximum efficiency, I'm sorry, maximum convenience and safety. This one is the most clear one that is absolutely not met. As far as objections to the nearby properties, we have a, we have two petitions aggregating 310 signatures from the neighborhood, contrary to what was presented. There was no pressure whatsoever for people to sign it. I know I started both petitions. I did not pressure anyone to sign. If someone didn't feel like signing, I thanked them just the same. As far as this criteria, it's the one also that goes to parking areas, and we've talked about that a lot. I think that it's very well-covered. There's no parking allowed in front of, in front, so on the street. So that's a problem. Right in front of the house, there's no extra parking, other than those two parking spots. And as I've mentioned, we have the bus route in same place. Then we have the 12H5 requirements for an intermittent daycare center, and the vast majority are not of the criteria, not met. One of them is the 70, 750 square feet fenced outdoor play area. I mentioned, that's not met. I cannot see how it can be determined that a rooftop deck could count for this. So in my view, that's not met. And the, the next criteria, D and E, is about playground facilities, not abutting any public street. Here I would say it's not met, because you cannot access the play areas without going through the driveway that abuts the street. Then it says pickups and drop-offs have to be supervised. I don't believe that that's met, because I don't see how two caregivers can be taking it care of and attending to the children and helping with the traffic and the parking and the drop-offs and the pickups. I don't see it. Criteria H talks about how you have to have a bathroom and cooking facilities. The application says that there will be no cooking facilities, only heating facilities, and that parents must bring all food in with the children. This puts additional stress and time on bringing the children in, because they, you have to get out of your car. You have to unbuckle the child, bring the child in. Then you have to bring all the food in. This adds time, and I, I, I think those two parking spaces are not going to turn over that quickly. And everybody mentioned, you have to back out, people are waiting. It's going to be very dangerous and unsafe. And then lastly, criteria I talks about adequate off-street parking. We've covered that. That doesn't exist. So these serious deficiencies are not capable of remedy. That's why, in my opinion, I don't think there's any need to, to really look at this further, because you can't, you can't create more parking spaces than there are. You cannot create an outdoor play area that does not exist. So I think that these, these deficiencies are not capable of remedy. That's why I'm really asking that you deny the application. Lastly, I do want to say-
You said "lastly" before.
This is your second.
Well, sorry, and actu- actually. Well, well, we all get our time, and I, and I do think I'm offering a lot of information that's different from what you've heard, and I do actually have more than one last thing. But the applicant said that, which was very good, that he acknowledged that their website announced the grand opening of the daycare center. And I, but I have to say, my observation there is that I think this is a presumption that doesn't seem to recognize the authority of the planning board to deny, deny it. And I also want to say that it sets an unacceptable precedent precedent of publicly disregarding the authority of the Eastchester Planning and Zoning Boards. So I personally find it offensive. Now, I do want to, those were the end of my talking points, which are summarized, which you have summarized in the packet I gave you, but I did hear a couple of other things. You, you mentioned ADA. I don't know if that's necessary or not, but definitely not ADA compliant for the children to go up to the play area on the deck. As far as the capping at 15, last meeting they said 15 to 25. I don't know if, once approved, if there's room to go beyond 15. That's something you'll need to consider. I want to address quickly that people talked about whether people will walk their children. It, it's very unlikely unless somebody lived just, you know, a couple of houses down. I, I mean, I don't know if you have children, but when you have children and their stuff, and now also their food. If you have to walk more than half a block, nobody's going to do that. I, I just don't think it's, it's, it's reasonable. As far as whether the employees or the residents, what if they quit? There's turnover. That has to be taken into account for the parking spots. And I, I've said my piece. Thank you all for listening.
I do have a question for you.
Go to the mic.
Go to the mic, yep. I, I'd like you to answer it in three sentences or fewer. The, the map that you showed with the bus route on it, this is a, a beeline commuter bus that goes right through the neighborhood? It goes right down Downer? How big a bus is this?
It's the very large bus.
Full-size bus?
It's the full-size bus.
Okay. And that comes down the hill in the morning at Downer? Okay, all right. I, I have a map, I could see it. I just wanted to confirm the size of the bus. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for your patience. I know it was a lot.
No, thank you, Phil, there for you put into it.
And, and it was, looking at the transcript of the last hearing, it was, the, the exact statement was that they were looking for 15. This, this is what your representative said. He would hope to get 20, but optimistic he'll get 15. That's what was said. Okay?
Thanks, everyone, for listening. Thanks to the community for all the work and research you've done on all of this. Melissa Crowicki-Halen, I've lived at 14 Scarsdale for almost 50 years. I've traveled Downer and Scarsdale for all these five decades. And the interesting thing that I don't know if it's been brought up, the streets in Green Knolls are very narrow. There's only parking on one side. Those of us who travel these streets all the time, we realize that we are always pulling over in between the cars if we're driving on that side.
And the buses?
And the buses, yes. So it's very interesting. So my concern, I'm adding a concern here, is that the other side, where there's no traffic, there's no parking allowed, that then, if cars start to stop there to drop off their children on that side, again, you're not even going to be able to get up and down those two streets. So just to add that to the mix, number one. And I'm very concerned about setting a precedent in a residential neighborhood throughout Eastchester if this permit is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. (applause)
I'm going to be very quick. Eric Kessin, 15 Vassar Place. I don't know if this has been covered, but I'm just looking at page 168 of the zoning ordinance for daycare facility. It says, "The site in which the facility is located shall be a minimum of 15,000 square feet," which is more than a third of an acre. I called the assessor's office, and the assessor said the property has 0.19 acre. You multiply that by 43,560 square feet, which is the square footage of an acre, and this property has approximately 8,276 square feet. It is 6,724 square feet deficient, or 80 percent.
If I could just interrupt you, that is the requirement for commercial daycare centers, and this application is for an intermittent daycare center-
Oh, okay.
Where the minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet.
Oh, okay. Because, okay, there's other things here also, okay.
That is for a different class of daycare center, commercial daycare centers.
Oh, okay, so then it's not an issue.
Correct. Those are not the applicable criteria.
Okay, thanks.
Do you have anything else? No. Okay. Any other comments from the public that haven't been made? Good. Thank you. What are we doing now? That's it. Okay. Do we have any comments, guys? I think we're all talked out. Okay. So first, thank you to all of you folks for coming and expressing your concerns about the project. I think I've said at other meetings, but we're members of the community too, and we look at this as if it's our neighborhood just as much as it is yours. So Mr. Pulaski stole my thunder when he went to that section of the special permit, and I can't agree with him more. And then everyone else kept saying more things from the special permit, and it's really coming to my agreement that I don't think this belongs here. And guys, I'm going to ask, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask our, and make a motion to make a tax for denial of the application. I guess we could vote on that. Do we close the public hearing and then take that vote?
Yes.
And make a motion, and we vote one at a time?
Yes, unless anybody has anything to add that you might want to continue the public hearing.
Yeah, if you guys want to add in, but that's what I intend on doing, we'll put up the vote one at a time. But I think I'm going to close the public hearing, and then I'll make that motion. You guys could vote on it accordingly.
Yeah. The only additional point I would raise is that we have had principally discussion of traffic, and, you know, there seems to be near unanimity that this is a very difficult space, and a heavily trafficked space, and one that, you know, I think it's almost indisputable that a bad situation would be made worse, maybe only incrementally worse, but made worse, and that might be sufficient to trigger the standard that we've been discussing. But there is an option, and I don't know if it's an option that we want to go to at this point, which is to actually have a traffic study commissioned. I don't know if that's, quite frankly, the sentiment I'm getting, the sense I'm getting is that that would probably merely confirm what seems to be anecdotally the case, and even in your own informal view and numbers, Mr. Thomas, it does appear that it is a very heavily trafficked area. And I think that's all the study would probably tell us, and that this would make it a little bit worse. But there are other concerns that have been raised as well. So I don't know if that's an avenue we want to move towards, or whether it may simply, the balance, on balance, the issues may be ultimately insurmountable here, and to do a traffic study might be sort of a waste of money and time. So I just throw that out there.
Thank you. Any other comments, guys?
Just one comment, and actually maybe a question, but in rejection of the application or approval of the application, it's based on the current application with what's being proposed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So in support of small business, in support of daycares, they could always try to propose something lesser, whether it's one person, two people, seven people, as a separate application?
Sure.
Great.
Good. So then I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing, application 2513 Great Day Family Childcare, 32 Harney Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And as I said, I'm going to make a motion to ask the planning department to prepare a draft denial resolution for consideration at the April meeting. Mr. Nemec?
Uh, second emotion.
So it's a yea? Yeah. Lauren?
I'm in agreeance with the denial.
It's a yea. JB, it's a yea?
Yea.
And Michael?
Yea.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, if I could add, I think it's been alluded to here, that the standard for this type of special permit in a residential neighborhood is a pretty demanding one. And it seems that, you know, while I think the best you can do, and you've made a good presentation of that, is that the effect wouldn't be an astronomical one, it still is unquestionably, I think, a negative one from the standpoint at a minimum of traffic. That's assuming we can, you know, you were able to get variances and address some of the other concerns that have been raised. But this really is, and, you know, we all are residents of the town of Eastchester. I very, very rarely use that as a cut-through. I usually go straight up Brook Street and find that. But I do know that it's a very, one of the reasons I don't use it as a cut-through is because it's an uncomfortable street to drive in, it's very crowded, and then you end up on that little section of Maple. It's just not worth it to me. But I do know it's, from personal experience, it's a very heavily trafficked area, and that intersection in particular, I had to stop myself from interrupting. How do you get around that there's a left turn only coming from the Bronx River Parkway, and then there's the right lane, and then there's the right turn only? Well, the way that most people seem to get around if there's somebody in the right lane is to just simply use the left lane as a right lane as well, because I see that all the time. It's a bit of a mess, that traffic area to begin with, and I don't think this would help. So that's part of the logic behind my vote.
So on April 25th, do they need to be present for that, or it's just procedural thing?
Yeah, it's just procedural. There'll be no comment, no public hearing, it'll just be a review of the resolution and a vote.
Okay. So for the public, you can come back and listen, but that's where we are, same with the applicant. You can come and listen, but that's the direction we're going to go in. I'm pretty sure it will be unanimous, the approval of it. Thank you, everyone. Next application.
Thank you.
Next application is 2401 42 Maple Avenue.
There are actually a lot of daycare's ran out of residences within the town.
Small, right?
You don't even know who they are. The only reason I know them is that I didn't take a sight.
Yeah.
So it's a big, big part.
I actually enjoyed that. I think I can find my stuff. Try and mitigate.
Yeah. There's one more.
Yeah.
Everyone, please, please exit if you're no longer here for an application. Exit and exit quietly. Thank you.
Straight forward. Straight forward.
Even if no one showed up, we would have voted the same way.
Yeah. I think, so, it's a total of 15 points out of 10 people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good evening. Steve Anderson from Gabriel Senior PC, Land Surveyors and Engineers. And we've been before you before on Maple Avenue. It's a two-lot subdivision technically, it was two tax lots, and eventually it went into one-
Thanks, Gary.
There's two tax lots that eventually, as the family, you know, passed, it would pass from one member to the other, and eventually came as one and is consolidated. It's in two zones, so we have the variance for the existing house. There was a seven foot into eight foot, so we got the variance for that, and also for the building area footprint. So we met all the requirements for the zoning, so now we're back to you. We do realize it will come back to you for site plan review, but at this point, we're asking for the subdivision to be approved, so.
I have no questions.
Do we have a memo from our consultant about this?
Yes, we do. Rick, do you want to just speak quickly about-
Can you give us a minute to recover?
Rick Bolander, KSCJ Consulting. There are a few remaining items in the comment letter, but really minor comments, and it all can be addressed during the site plan approval for the lot. Nothing really in regards to the subdivision. So we will see it again, and I'm sure it will be addressed once we go through the site plan approval process.
That is enough for me.
Is this a public hearing?
The public hearing is still open. It was left open before it was referred to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so there is an open hearing on it.
So we're just approving the subdivision?
Yeah, because it's coming back to us from the Zoning Board of Appeals, with the variances granted. We've otherwise, I recall, we've had this at least three times. This is at least the third time we've done this, and this was the one that I, that I think we touched upon earlier about the subdividing, but by virtue of the fact that the property was owned by the same individual, it basically knitted together.
Correct.
And now we're just separating what was once two pieces, so.
Right. So these four, these four actions that you wrote down, these will by matter, of course, be part of the approval?
Right. So I have proposed, you know, conditions of a subdivision approval and a timing for when the conditions would have to be satisfied.
Okay, the whole recreation fee and all that is sort of-
Correct.
Part of that, so we don't have to go through them. Okay, good. So it's a public hearing. Public hearing is open on this application. If there's any comments from the public about 42 Maple Avenue subdivision, now is the time? So then I make a motion to close the public hearing, the application?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We don't have to do anything about SECRE, we're all done with that?
Yes, you adopted a negative declaration in September.
We did?
Yes.
Okay, so this is just approving, which I can do. So I make a motion to approve application 2401 42 Maple Avenue subdivision, subject to the conditions stated in the mid-
Yeah, I can summarize them. To satisfy the conditions of the subdivision comments of KSCJ's memo from today. Condition two, the approval doesn't grant site plan approval for any of the lots. Site plan approval will be required for the development of either lot. The planning board finds that a recreation area can't be properly located, on land included in the plat, but the subdivision will increase the demand on recreation facilities, and so therefore, the applicant shall pay the recreation fee for one new lot, as provided in zoning law, Section 9H2. And after the filing of the subdivision plat, but before a building permit is issued for the proposed vacant lot, the applicant shall submit a letter to the Town of Eastchester Assessor, merging the tax lots for that lot.
Great, thank you, Mel. So I think I made the motion. Do I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're good. Thank you. The next application is 24-25 34 Water Street, 1 and 3 Wrigleyano subdivision. Oh, it's you again. There you go.
He got it.
I was going to say, is there a Wrigleyano in the house? No, you are.
Yeah, with so many Wrigleyanos in the house, I was figuring we'd get a presentation.
From the Wrigleyano.
Steven Anderson, Gabriel Senior PC, Land Surveyors, Engineers. Yes, this is a subdivision. Currently, the property on 34 Water Street goes all the way back to here, and there's been a recent subdivision on Wrigleyano Way. So what we want to do is put a new lot here with a driveway access off the cul-de-sac. And we did get a denial letter to, you know, we're trying to keep the houses with the neighborhood, so this is a 10,000-square-foot lot, but to get some of the side yard setbacks and everything, we, you know, we had the building inspector look at it, and he did list the denial and what we would need for that. But we also have to go meet the building inspector for this lot here, which the area came down, it had original variances from 2019. So some of the items now that are changing are the lot areas going down. I believe that the side yard setbacks are larger than what was originally given in the variance, and the front yard is 50 feet. Originally was 80, because the lot line changed from here to there. So there's items that we have to meet with the building inspector to clarify. So I'm not too sure, can we still proceed the zoning? Can we get a referral now? I mean, if we meet with them next week, I would have all these-
Sure. So that's up to the board. So we have two procedural steps to think about. First is, this is an unlisted action under SECRE, and we are conducting a coordinated review, so in order to advance this to the zoning board, you would need to make a determination of significance under SECRE, so that's one thing. And then what Mr. Anderson is alluding to is that we have a notice of denial for the proposed new lot, but in reviewing the plat and going back and looking at the records of the original Wrigleyano subdivision, there were variances granted for several of the other lots, and some of those are being affected. Like you said, for example, the lot size that was deficient is now becoming a little bit more deficient, so those variances are going to need to be adjusted by the Zoning Board of Appeals for this to move forward. So we just have to clarify that. And what, the configuration that is proposed is what is proposed, and it shows that additional deficiency. It's up to you to decide if you actually want to see the notice of denial before you advance this onto the zoning board, or if you're comfortable advancing this onto the zoning board, assuming you're ready to make a SECRE determination with that, those additional variances still undefined.
So I have in front of me the memo from Mr. Bolander regarding this application dated March 26th, which is really long. And there's a number of things on this that I think need to be addressed before we go forward. I mean, do you want to come up and concur, or opine on that? If it were just a few, I'd say, let's go forward with conditions. Seems like there's some substantive issues that have to be addressed.
The biggest substantive issue was the stormwater design, just to update it to mitigate the 100-year storm, which the applicant has done. We reviewed the stormwater design. We were comfortable with that. That was really the main remaining item. And it does look like a lot of comments, but a lot of the stuff has been addressed. So there wasn't any, it was a stormwater that was the big concern of ours. That was addressed. The remaining items are really kind of just tidying up and just cleaning up the drawings is really, really it.
Yeah, most of them are comment satisfied.
Yes.
So it's checking off the box, right?
Yep.
And if the variances are approved, the application will have to return to this board to conclude the subdivision review process. So today, what you're considering is whether you're prepared to make a SECRE determination and advance to the zoning board.
Oh, okay. So the comments- So the comments in the twenty, in the memo of the twenty-sixth have been addressed to your satisfaction, even though they were addressed today, or?
It was, and you guys submitted.
The day of the deadline.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah.
Which I don't recall the day, but yes.
Review, your latest review.
Yep. Was in response to the latest submission, which addresses the stormwater, the bulk of the stormwater comments.
There was a memo issued for the September twenty-seventh meeting, excuse me, September twenty-sixth meeting, and I think the comments satisfied are, those comments that were issued in September are being pulled through to this memo.
Okay.
We've not made a secret determination on this ever before?
No.
No.
Okay, it seems like this is about.
Yeah, this is the second appearance, right? The applicant came for a sketch plan approval just to kind of review the configuration, because it's a little bit of an atypical situation with the through lot coming through and then connecting to a new street. So sketch plan review was conducted in June, and then the preliminary application began in September, but there were a lot of comments from our consulting engineers, so the applicant has taken some time to address those. As you can see, many of them have been addressed, and so now we're at the point to perhaps to consider SECRE and an advancement to the zoning board.
Sure. Before we do that, I'm just flipping through them, and they all, as you said, seem pretty commonplace. The one about the utility company and pole, is that going to cause any trouble, or you'll get that?
We don't anticipate that being a problem, but again, that will be revisited during site plan approval.
Right, it's not going to change the configuration or anything?
No.
It's just, where is, like, there's one offensive pole that's causing trouble?
Yeah.
Down here. I've spoken to the.
Can you just, sorry, do you use the microphone? Thank you.
Yeah, it's down in this area, and I've told, have asked the applicant to investigate that.
I guess they're both Water Street.
Moving it out of the, moving it out of the right of way onto a sidewalk or?
The pole is.
The pole is in the.
Yeah.
Joe, you gotta get up and speak.
Joe Rogliano, nice to meet you. So the pole was installed by Con Edison. It's not in the right of way, it's in the actual, I'm sorry, in the right of way where the street goes. It's in the correct location where the pole was supposed to be. So it was, there's no, I'm not sure why that comment's in there, because the poles have already been installed. So it's, I mean, year, in two thousand nineteen almost.
Okay. It's a non-issue, it sounds like?
Should be a non-issue, yes.
Okay, good. Thanks, Joe.
It's required, so it's the way, we can't, we can't remove the pole.
I believe it is. That would take it at least two years, right? Okay, cool.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So then, secret determination.
And just to that point, I do have in your packets for this evening, there's the environmental assessment form, part one, prepared by the applicant, and the, and a draft of part two, that is the evaluation of the impacts. Given that the stormwater concerns have been addressed and that as a condition of the approval, we will require proof that utility service can be provided and that this is just creating one additional lot, I have proposed in the part two, note a small impact on all of the, on all of the items, unless anybody has any comments or if there's anything that anybody would like to discuss.
I'm in agreement that in each of these categories in the part two of the environmental impact assessment, that there's either no or small impact, that there is no moderate to large impact on any of these items.
So that being said, we could vote on a negative declaration for this?
I would support that.
Okay, so get that back to her. Thank you. So then, do we do the public comments on this?
Public hearing is still open, I think.
Oh, right. Any comments from the public? No, great. We leave it open, obviously. Questions, comments from us, public? Okay, cool. So I make a motion to adopt a secret negative declaration for application twenty-four dash twenty-five thirty-four Water Street and one and three Rigliano Way, based on the environmental assessment forms, parts one and two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then I make a motion to refer this application to the Zoning Board of Appeals for review of the required variances and to continue the public hearing on this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're good. You're welcome. Thanks, guys. Have a good night. Say hi to everyone. So the next application is twenty-five dash eighteen, two-ten Marble Dale Road subdivision.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Louis Campana, on behalf of the applicant. Just gonna plug in my computer. So, two-ten Marble Dale Road, as we all know, it is a pretty unsightly property located in both the village of Tocco and the town of Eastchester.
It's not beauty in the eye of the beholder.
So, a new, there's a new owner of the building. They, they run a HVAC, it's like a HVAC plumbing business, access piping. And they purchased the building and they're going to be occupying the back portion of the building, which is located here. So what, what we're doing is, we're moving the existing lot line, which is located just to the left of the existing building right here, where my cursor is, and moving it approximately fifty-three feet to the, to the north. That fifty-three feet would give us the parking as shown here, including a three-foot buffer for evergreen hedge or, or a solid PVC fence. By making the move of lot, with a lot line adjustment, there are a number of variances that are required. More of a formality than anything else, because they are all non-conforming existing, or should say existing, non-conforming conditions, which is the location of the building and the setbacks from the front side and rear property lines. As you can see, we're on the property line to the, to the south. On the north, we have one foot or one point four feet, zero at the front, and then I believe it's thirty, thirty-five feet, thirty-five point nine. So we're deficient in the rear, we're deficient on the southern side, and we're deficient on the front. The town line traverses the property. All right, here's the town line, so these, what physically looks like two lots is actually four, even complicating it more, right? So, that being said, we have the residential lot, which is in the commercial district, but the R five zoning regulations apply to this zone. We're in compliance with, with everything other than just the rear yard setback, which is, which is here, at thirteen feet as opposed to, I believe it's twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken.
Where's the rear, the rear yard setback? Is it, is it on the top?
So the rear, so the rear yard, we're fronting here on Glen.
Okay, I'll see, yes.
Right, so this is considered our front, and then we have our two sides, which are the most forgiving setbacks, and then we have the rear here, which is to the, to the new lot line.
Got it.
Both of these lots are actually of a common ownership as well. Part of the, the improvements here would be to, number one, create the parking area with, with drainage beneath it. And then you'll see that there's a slope, a pretty drastic slope at the rear, and we would have a short retaining wall, just to flatten that grade out for the parking area. We do have a handicap spot with an access aisle, and the curb cut is changing slightly from the existing condition. There really isn't a curb cut now, it's hard to even make it out. There's also an existing garage, which is, quite honestly, should be deemed unsafe. That would be taken out to accommodate this parking area as well. On the residential lot, lot one T, we are creating a new curb cut on Glen with, with the driveway and turnaround. Currently, there is no driveway for that property, and the car shop uses the lawn for, for parking, so. All in all, I think an enhancement. That will be reviewed under the site plan review this year's for the subdivision, or the lot line adjustment.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get my bearings based on existing conditions. There's already a parking, well, there's already some type of a parking area, so what exactly you're trying, can you just simplify exactly what you're trying to do based on the existing condition?
Yeah, I'm gonna pull up the survey. So here's the existing conditions survey. This hatched area here is the portion of the existing commercial building, which is located in Eastchester, and there is sort of broken pavement that turns into gravel and then grass.
Right.
Right next to it, and this is the detached garage, which would, should be deemed unsafe.
So you're basically formalizing that to be an actual parking, okay.
So we're trying to get the parking off of the street, which is currently an issue. There's parking that's going on in non-parking spaces.
Good, good, yeah.
So it's, you know, and with new development in Tocco along Marble Dale Road, Tocco's hopefully going to be appreciative of this as well, because there's a lot of, everything's a traffic study and a parking study.
Louis, are you also making a corresponding application to Tocco for?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and just out of curiosity, at what state, what's, what's the status of that?
So I've, I've applied for both planning and zoning. They require one, one variance for parking in the front yard, which would be on the southern property or, like lot two E, because of the parking lot goes to the, to the curb, basically. So there, I'm going next week to the, planning board work session, and then I believe the following week is the zoning work session. So I'm gonna start the, the planning board and zoning hearings, once we get to a certain point with you guys, because I believe you guys are going to be, or what you're voting on is lead agency for this.
Yeah, so the subdivision, so subdivisions in general are unlisted actions under SECRE, and because of all the agencies involved here, rather than each one doing SECRE independently, I think it's most efficient for the applicant and for the boards, for one board to take lead agency and to complete SECRE. And since your board kind of has the biggest role in this application, since most of the property is in Eastchester and the most prominent approval is the subdivision, it makes sense for your board to declare its intent to be lead agency. So what's recommended tonight, if you're in agreement, is just a motion to declare your intent to be lead agency. We'll do the lead agency circulation to our Zoning Board of Appeals and to the Tocco Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals. And then at the next meeting, provided that Tocco consents, because we don't have thirty days before our next meeting, you can declare lead agency status and then we could advance the review.
Okay. And there, so we did get memos, one from Ms. Wolfson and also from KSCJ. We're working through that, and by the next time we submit, we hope to have most of those comments addressed.
With the final intent being what you pointed out, that the parking will all be in one lot, once it's subdivided?
Yes, yes. So the intention is to get that, that, that line, the property line over to encompass the parking and the commercial building of one lot.
In one lot, okay.
Yeah.
Got it. Okay. You have anything else?
I believe that's all.
Okay, good. So this is, we did our comments, so I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-five.
Want to hear from Mr. Bolander?
Sure. He's here.
I certainly do.
You could have escaped. You could have just left with everyone else, as you can see.
Rick Bolander, KSCJ Consulting, just in case you forgot who I was. Yeah, just a well-thought-out set of plans. Obviously, it's the first meeting, there still needs to be just some, some details added, I get with stormwater. Just the plans further along, I don't doubt that they won't be with the next submission. One of our suggestions was geared towards stormwater. Obviously, they have to mitigate the increase in impervious, the redevelopment, so they have to mitigate the increase in impervious for the hundred-year storm. There's the addition of the driveway to the residence. What we suggested, instead of trying to treat that water, because we're only required to treat a certain amount from the new parking lot, so we just suggested try to capture the entirety of the new parking lot to offset the increase from the residential, just because to buck grade and come back and treat the water from the driveway, we just thought it would make more sense, and it would actually be more area to do the entire parking lot instead of trying to force the driveway and a portion of the parking lot. It would just be a cleaner design, really treating more, actually more area than will be required. And that was one of our big suggestions with stormwater, and obviously, as they further along the plans, we'll look at screening the parking area to the residence. That'll be, that'll be important, whether it's landscaping, a wall, a fence, not a wall, a fence. I think landscaping would look nice, but maybe a combination of the two. But yeah, really, no more substantive comments, kind of just further along the plans engineering-wise. But all in all, it looks like a good, well-thought-out set of plans.
Okay. And we start with the, moving the property line. But I mean, all those issues, did you say that you think they will be addressed before the next submission, before the next meeting?
That seems to be the intent, correct.
Okay.
And there's nothing that you said there that would necessitate a change in the, in the actual development, the lot and everything, right?
No, correct.
This is all stormwater management?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Cool. Thank you. So now I will open the public hearing. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-five eighteen, two-ten Marble Dale Road subdivision.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hello again, Adam Schellberger, live across the street. After seeing the designs, I like it. That area is abysmal in terms of parking with the Verizon, and they're already parking on the lawn underneath a tree and everything else, so we were discussing to ourselves, are they gonna put some kind of hedgerow or fence or something like that? So it's less of an eyesore from Glen and from Marble Dale in general, and blocking out some headlights or anything else in off-hours or nighttime. Looks good. Maybe you would consider which side of the parking lot is just on Glen, because it is, it's a single lane exit there, and it's a little, it's a little complicated with the Verizon and the way the parking is. I don't have a preference, whatever they want to do, I'm happy with it, but, because actually that, that house tends to park in front of my driveway, which blocks my driveway, so, and just in general. You also have a do-not-park-pass-this-line sign there, which, in front of my house, and currently that's, you can't park there unless you're a motorcycle, and people park there and block my driveway and tow them, so you might have to just figure that out with, with your, with your parking, but, or with your entrance to the driveway, but I like the plan, I'm supportive of it.
Great, thank you. That was easy. You can move the sign, that would really help them, that's what I heard.
Decreasing the parking load on the street. Thanks.
Okay. He's on your side. Okay, so, public hearing stays open, and now I'm just going to, you don't have anything else to do, Louis?
No, I don't.
Good. So then, I make a motion to declare the planning board's intent to be the lead agencies in a secret review of application twenty-five dash eighteen, two-ten Marble Dale Road subdivision, and to ask the board staff to complete the required lead agency circulation.
Okay, if I could just clarify, the planning board of the town of Eastchester?
Yes.
Second.
That's where we are. Right, so do I get a second?
I just said second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, and I guess I can make a motion to continue the public hearing on this application to the April twenty-fourth meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Good evening.
Next application is. Next application is twenty-five dash nineteen, one-twenty-two Montgomery Avenue. Have a good evening, guys.
There you go. Good night.
Take care.
Thank you. He was two-for-two on the supporting case.
Good evening, members of the board, John Semenara, one of the owners of one-twenty-two Montgomery. I'm here looking for reapproval of what was approved in June, I believe, of the twenty-four. Nothing's changed on our end, just the time elapsed, so.
So it's the, there are no changes to what we approved?
Correct.
This is simply a case of, for whatever reason, and we're not gonna pry, you weren't able to get it done as quickly as you'd hoped, right?
Exactly, well, on a commercial piece, there was two, three different engineers, and I wasn't really aware that it was a six-month expiration, so.
Okay. I was gonna just say that, it seems like we just approved this, it's six months.
I actually had a thought afterward.
Six months, yeah, sorry.
I actually had a thought afterwards, I'm happy you brought it back. It looks great.
It does, it looks better now than you were here last.
You should've come to us with this one first.
Just haven't seen it for a while. Yeah, it looks very, it's, it's nice.
Yeah, the way our code reads, you have a six-month period, which you can request to extend for an additional six months, but you have to make that request.
Yes.
So we're gonna elaborate that a little bit more in our resolution, so that's a little bit more clear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any intent on getting this off the ground in the next six months?
I was hoping start two weeks ago, three weeks ago.
All right, well, we'll be here, if you need us. So then, stand by, I'm gonna, if you have any other comments, and there's comments to hear, we'll just go through the public hearing. So, let's see, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-five dash nineteen, one-twenty-two Montgomery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll close it, and we will approve it. So I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, twenty-five dash nineteen, one-twenty-two Montgomery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to approve the application, one-twenty-two Montgomery Avenue, based on the project plans and findings, as provided in the resolution issued for the project on June twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and subject to the conditions imposed upon that approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have no idea what those conditions are, but I imagine you do.
They were well conceived, I'm sure.
The main condition was just the location of the fence. That was, that was our biggest point of discussion, yeah.
Yes, the fence, I remember the fence, yes.
Great, thank you, grab your stuff, thank you. We like doing speed approvals here, if you've got anything else, we'll approve it.
When I saw this application, when I was reading it, I'm like, this is gonna be a quicker meeting than it looks like, well.
Yes, because.
I was wrong.
That's pretty good. So next application, have a good night, is twenty-four dash forty-six, eighty-six Woodruff. You've been here for the duration, huh? We got one more after that, too.
Good evening, I'm Stephanie Malinsky, the architect, presenting on behalf of my client, Joseph Gizo. The house is at eighty-six Woodruff, zoning district R5. There's kind of two different parts to the proposed addition, there's a small addition, a second-floor addition at the back of the house, extending over an existing deck, creating two bedrooms, and then the second part of the addition is on the side of the house, creating an attached garage. That's what's viewable from the front yard. The existing house isn't changing much from the front, we are changing some roof lines just to clean them up. That also allows a second window to be added at the front facade, otherwise, the new garage addition just kind of adds some depth and interest to that front facade. And this is the vinyl siding that's being proposed for the entire house, white windows, white trim, and then some accents of black at the front door, the garage door, and the shutters, you can see.
So how much bigger is the garage that's being proposed to, as compared to the existing?
Oh, it's smaller. The current garage is a detached garage at the back of the house, that's a two-car garage, this is just over one car.
Is that being removed, the existing?
Yes.
And, okay, and then a one-car garage attached to the side, to the left side of the house?
Correct, that's what's being added.
Is there still a driveline that goes back to where the existing?
No, so we wanted to create more yard space in the back there.
So it's basically stopping at the new one, and that's your new driveway?
Correct, yeah. There is a patio that we're adding behind the garage. We needed a bunch of variances that we received.
So it's pretty simple, we're just adding the garage?
Yeah, from the front, yeah, basically.
And the rear and the back, right?
In the back, it's that second-floor addition above the existing deck.
And so is there an overall decrease, then, in impervious surface, by virtue of your having a smaller garage?
Correct, yeah.
And the footprint of the house itself is identical, right? The footprint?
Um.
Because you're building above, yeah.
Yeah, if you, right, if you include the deck, we're just building above the existing deck, yeah.
Okay. So where did the ISO come from? The black and white ISO? Does your drafting produce that? I'm just kind of curious.
So it's a sketch-up model that then I, yeah, kind of sketched over.
Oh, and that's how you get that?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting, pretty cool. Okay, I don't have any comments. If there's no other comments, I will make a motion to open the public hearing, so then...
Yeah, well, I just wanted to point out, the architectural review board did review this application in March, and, you know, some of its comments, some of their comments have been incorporated, they did just ask to propose screening in front of the air-conditioning unit, I don't know if you want to see what that is, or where it's proposed, or what's proposed.
A screen for the AC?
Right.
Yeah, so I just added a shrub in front of it.
Where is it? Is it on the side lot?
So this was the, the existing AC unit was here, where the new garage is, so instead of, you know, moving all of the connections, we're just scooching it out a little bit, so I proposed a shrub in front of that, just to hide that from the front yard.
Okay.
And then they just asked that the front, the existing front roof, the shingles match the, the shingles that are proposed on the garage, and I don't know if that was indicated on the elevation, and I missed it, or, or not, but that was one of the comments from the ARB.
Yes, I added that note to the drawings.
That was on the drawings as well, okay.
Good.
Should we do the public hearing?
No.
It's open, but not closed.
Thank you. So I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application, twenty-four dash forty-six, eighty-six Woodruff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So the conditions are the ones Noel just brought up, and of course, there's the one that says, "The approval authorized the applicant to undertake only activities specifically depicted on the plans," et cetera, et cetera, so that goes without saying. And that being taken, that being said, I make a motion to approve this application, twenty-four dash forty-six, eighty-six Woodruff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good to go?
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night. The last application is twenty-five dash fourteen, sixty-nine Highland.
Yes, Stephanie's back.
Yep.
Good evening, Stephanie Malinsky again, I'm the architect representing my clients for sixty-nine Highland, so we're proposing to enclose and insulate an existing sunroom that they have at the front of their house, with new windows and siding, currently, it's just kind of like aluminum paneling, and like large plexiglass panels. So the new finishes will actually improve the aesthetic of the house, proposing the Artisan, the Hardyboard Artisan V-Groove siding, which I have here. And then the colors, so we're repainting the entire house in the lighter color that you see there, and then all of the trim on the house will be one of the darker colors, they haven't decided on which, and then the new front sunroom will be that same darker color, as you can see in the colored renderings.
Do you have samples for both there?
The two colors?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're both... So this is the main house, and then they just haven't decided between these two colors for the trim, as well as the new siding.
Oh, so it's three different shades? The house, the trim?
The house, and then they're gonna select one of those on either side.
Got it. Yep, looks great. I don't have any other comments.
So this is just, it's just that sunroom that's being changed here, and probably by virtue of it being over whatever the requirement is, you have to come before us?
Correct.
Okay, yep.
Right, we're not changing setbacks, it's staying exactly where it is, we're just putting walls around it?
Correct.
Good.
And this was also reviewed by the architect.
The same, the roof's the same.
They didn't have any comments, I guess, right? Good. So I make a motion to open the public hearing on twenty-five fourteen, sixty-nine Highland.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There's nobody here, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on the same application, sixty-nine Highland.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
If there's no more comments, I make a motion to approve the application, sixty-nine Highland.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Don't go yet, no, you guys don't go yet.
You can go. Or you can just watch, watch us.
What are we doing here?
Watch us follow through with an administrative item, right?
No, no, I just got, we got, we have one administrative item about application twenty-three dash fifteen, Sal's Market and Pizzeria. On November fourteenth, the ZBAG granted area advances relative to the application, they appear before the ARB on April fourth, the application was last before the planning board on June twenty-seventh. On February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, the board asks the planning department to send the applicant a letter about an update on the project, applicant's consultant responded by letter on March nineteenth, and advised the board that applicant plans to proceed with the review, and is coming back on the twenty-fourth, so it's not, they'll be back. That's it, we just asked for a status, we got the, we got that status. So now I make a motion to adjourn the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five planning board meeting, next meeting will be April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.